Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District School Board, Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, November 29th. This meeting is called to order. To begin with, one of the best ways to start any meeting is we're going to hear about the Brighton Believer Awards. Dr. McGowan.
Thank you very much. I'm so excited to present to you a couple more Brighton Believes awards. This evening, this is again a project from the Brighton Believes Committee, a district-wide, community-wide group of people looking to recognize folks for demonstrating our Brighton beliefs here in our school community. Nomination forms are online. We encourage people to certainly participate in that as well. I'd like to begin by asking Luisa Batek to come on up here, please. Along with Dr. Hall and Mrs. Edmonds. You can clap for them too, that's fine. So Luisa, now a ninth grader at PHS, was nominated by TCMS teacher Stacy Kugel. I'm sorry, Stacy, come on up too. I realize Stacy's here as well. Mrs. Kugel wrote, "Luisa is a TCMS Strong student leader who embodies all the traits of Brighton Believes. As the TCMS Strong faculty advisor, I've had the pleasure of working with Luisa this year and as her ELA teacher. Luisa is a wonderful role model for her peers. As a TCMS Strong leader, she attends all of our meetings and offers creative ideas for activities to do with the sixth grade win classes that we mentor. Luisa steps up when we need a student buddy for entering new students. In ELA class, Luisa is a conscientious student and puts forth 110% every day. She is the first person to help out a classmate. She enters the room with a smile and a warm greeting and she never forgets to ask me how my day is going." That's wonderful. "Luisa makes everyone she meets feel valued and important. I am so happy I spent this year with such a magnificent human." Is that our family right over there? How incredible. What a great kid. You must be so proud. You ought to be. And we're so proud of you for being kind and just making our school community a better place. Congratulations. Luisa, you are what we should all aspire to be like. Congratulations. And the TCMS Security Guard Team, Christopher Curvin, Joe Rieri, and Mike Spizano. Along with Mrs. Edmonds and Betsy Swas, if you could come on up also, please. This team was nominated by teacher Betsy Swas. She wrote, "All of our TCMS security guards work so hard to connect with all of our kids and keep us safe every day. I have witnessed them cheerfully greeting the students when they walk through the doors each morning, connecting on a personal level by asking about kids' interests, trying to mediate any disputes between kids, joking around and keeping it light, and helping teachers track down students. Not an easy task. I see them diffuse stressful situations with parents and adults. While walking the halls, they pick up wrappers or drop pencils to help keep the pride we feel in our school, always treating our students with respect and fairness when sometimes they don't necessarily get the same in return just shows how much they are invested in maintaining our school community. I hope they know how much they are valued and respected. We could not be TCMS without them." Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Still the best way to start a meeting that I can certainly think of. Great people in our community. We thank those folks for being honored. As a disclaimer, I will say as always. No, no, Lou, you cannot leave. As is the case in all of our public meetings, we invite the opportunity for the community to come in and participate, ask questions, or provide feedback. Is there anyone here today interested in doing so? Seeing no one, I will go on with a motion to approve the agenda we have all received.
So moved?
Moved by Karen?
No, Eleanor, I'll second.
Moved by Eleanor, seconded by Karen. All those in favor? Also, we've received the minutes previously. Approval of the minutes from the November 8th, 2022 Business Meeting. I'm sorry, first, any questions, comments, or edits to those minutes? Motion to approve the minutes as received. Moved by Sue? Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Next up is the principal reports. And it seems like the right time to start with Principal Tappan.
I'm sure you're going to go somewhere else because it was already called up. Good evening, everyone. All right. So we had a very special set of guests earlier in November. John and Haley Rocco visited Council Rock. Haley is the writer, the author, and John is the illustrator, husband-wife team. And it was on the day, again, the book's birthday, How to Send a Hug. And they treated our children to three different assemblies, read the book, and then shared. The book is all about how to send a letter, you know, the lost art of writing an actual handwritten letter, and how to send that through the mail. They had really interesting discussions about using personal letters and their own kind of love that grew through sending personal letters as they lived on both sides of the coast, and then talking about how to send, how to actually write a letter. And then, when the kids got back from their assembly, the PTSA and Brighton Education Fund helped to support a surprise. So every class was gifted a new book because it came out that day. It was a book birthday. That expression on that young first grader's face is all that you need to see to make, like to fuel you the rest of the year. But each child, so the classroom got a book. Each child got a pencil that said How to Send a Hug, stationery, an envelope, a jacket, they called it, a jacket with a stamp so that they could actually send the letter. So teachers are now spending time reminding them about the parts of a letter and sending those hugs. And then, we added to our HAB Lab connection to the visiting author. We are instructional technology specialists, designed a coding, a coding activity where students, these are B-bots that are borrowed from BOSI's as we're deciding what we might want to ask for within our HAB Lab. And they had to code and deliver the mail to, from the start to the finish, and then they had five different letters that they had to. So classrooms are signing up. This is Mrs. Files' class that came to learn about the coding and then actually do it. So it was kind of an all-encompassing, one of those things that magically happens and comes together with a lot of work from Adele Motzkowiczus, our amazing librarian, who kind of put herself out there to ask for this opportunity, and then the PTSA and Brighton Education Fund. So it was really a special day. And then, for me, the most proud moment was speaking with the authors and illustrator afterward, who said that our school is an incredibly special place, which I know, but it's always great to hear. They said, "We've been all over this country and I'm not sure we've ever..." Now, maybe they tell everybody that, but they seemed very earnest and genuine in telling us how special our kids were and the staff and how they prepared them. So it was a really special, a special time. It was Halloween at Council Rock, which is, of course, a big day. Mrs. Jeffries and I were Luigi and Mario. We had a lot of Luigi and Mario's look-alikes that we saw throughout the day. And the weather turned out great to be able to have both of our parades outside. And the new bus loop really works well for a Halloween parade. I'm not sure it was the full intention, but it works really well to be able to get the school outside. And it was great to welcome parents and volunteers back in a overwhelmingly, like, we were all at the door checking people in and doing special. We weren't used to that hustle and bustle, so it was exciting to have so many people back in the building and celebrating. We also celebrated, our second graders celebrated Election Day. All of our second graders were invited. Mrs. Youngman and Mrs. Yearleys did a great job organizing this, set up our HAB Lab as an Election Day voting polling place. And they voted, as they often do, on the Strong Museum Toy Hall of Fame. So all the choices were there. Then Mrs. Youngman's class tabulated the votes. They did several recounts, much like many of our states are doing, and have certified the election that Pound Puppies won at Council Rock. I still actually haven't heard. I kept looking to see what Strong's toys were. I'm not sure if anybody saw that. I didn't look recently. I'm not sure that it's announced yet, so I'll keep you updated. And then, this is just a follow-up. I shared the last time I presented that the staff did a lesson in our HAB Lab. Seems to be the team going through this, the use of our HAB Lab, but, and put together a book. And then Andrea Yaman and the team displayed it outside of her office. And this is just something I caught as I was walking down the hall. I wasn't intending to give you an update on this, but I saw kids all looking and seeing and, you know, I hope she won't mind this, but I heard one, "Oh, this is Mrs. Davis. Jill Mrs. Davis. Her name is Jill, our music teacher." So really getting to see the work that we did and see the excitement of it. So it was really great. And then, we have our first, I know French Road has done this for many years. We haven't had necessarily the space over the last several years, and it wasn't something that we just did when I came to Council Rock. But we said this year, why not, especially with our new space? So we had our kindergarten movie night. It's hard to see because it was dark. It was Ratatouille. We had about 100 students and families there. Mrs. Hatch was there volunteering and taking our money, doing all the calculations. But it was a really great time, and the kids loved it. And it was great to see families all together connecting, meeting their kids' friends, which maybe hasn't happened yet in a different forum, so. Along those lines, we are, the principals will be highlighting a different area within the Brighton Blueprint. So tonight, we're really looking at the student and family experience and looking at kind of the progress we've made towards that. I know you've gotten other Blueprint goal updates. But our school-based equity team is working right now to collect more data from our families. The original data we collected last spring was small, and we wanted to know more. So we are using, utilizing our time in parent-teacher conferences to really encourage parents to take the time to fill out and give us that feedback, and we're hoping to have a much larger, with kind of a personal invitation, to take the survey, to get a lot more data to help us know what we're doing well, but then also know what can we do to improve. One of the things that we have vowed was in doing some more of those get-togethers with families, and we've already accomplished one goal with our first kindergarten movie night. And then, in January, we have our first grade, and the PTSA is working on identifying a date for the second grade. The date was hard because it was last minute. We didn't have it planned with that large calendar that goes out, so we're looking to try to not have it be a conflict. And then Jeff Green, our Director of Student and Family Engagement, has been connecting every time that I meet with my PTSA, and I believe at all the other buildings, has been joining those meetings to just be the common thread to understand what the PTSA is doing to support us and then help us link and provide experiences for families across the board. Upcoming events, we have several half-days. I must compliment our families that we have the best. So normally, we have several kids who aren't quite ready. When they get home, families aren't quite ready. Maybe they missed the memo on the half-day. I believe we only had one student, we don't need to name who it was at all, who, but that was amazing. No one's sitting at the board table right now. I would never do that. Just a reminder, we do dismiss at 11:30, which means our buses pull out at 11:30. We have a half-day coming up this Friday, and then the 9th, and then also on the 16th. A reminder that report cards will be released on Parent Portal, but also going home in backpacks. So it's different than we have done to ensure that everyone gets that message about report cards this fall term for first and second grade. Kindergarten has a conference, but doesn't get a report card till after the New Year. And then, we have our famous stay in your PJs and read day on the day before, sliding into our holiday recess where we're closed, and then we'll be back in the New Year. Hard to believe we're saying that, but so excited. Any questions?
Nothing. Great to hear about the movie night. One thing Mrs. Gilbert and I learned was that kids were actually bringing luggage. When we were at the Friends movie night, like bags on wheels with blankets and pillows. I did see a picture of one kid's luggage, and it was luggage going in.
I used my big IKEA bag, and I'm not ashamed.
Oh, no, I was going to ask by what margin Pound Puppies won, you know, to cause so many recounts.
Oh, well, it was, I don't know that it was that close. It was just trying to be accurate. We trust our polling places. That's what we say.
Excellent.
At Council Rock, we can certify that election.
Did you have to explain to anybody what Light Bright actually was?
We had to explain a lot of those toys to our children. The adults all were walking like, "Oh, right," of course, but although I did have to explain to a young staff member what Light Bright was.
Dr. Tappan, Mr. Tappan, Principal Tappan. Thank you very much. Lashara?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. I'm not used to using the mouse. Where's the clicker? All right, so just some updates for French Road. Wanted to address, of course, the academic question, and we'll talk about the family and student experience. Our data reviews are complete for every single student. During that time, every single teacher comes, meet with the mental health staff, intervention teachers if needed. All teachers come together and really look at students in a comprehensive way, where we're not just looking at academics, we're also looking at social, emotional learning, or anything that we need to do to wrap our hands and arms around students to make sure that they're successful at press. As a result, we have some students that are receiving RTI, which were, plans are being developed for the same reasoning. Committee meetings are back. Last year, we didn't have any committee meetings, so this year, we set down the math and science team. Really, we just sat down just to talk about what happened in the previous years and what's going to be our next steps. We know that for science, the science exam is now moved into fifth grade or fourth grade. So fourth, fifth graders aren't taking it this year because they took it last year as fourth graders. And just looking at that exam, and it's not always about just the exam, but looking at that exam, it's a lot of critical thinking. So as a team, we want to take it back to our grade levels and really discuss how are we going to look at, make sure we have instruction in science experiments and explain to students that's also going to address the inquiry piece and make sure that they can be successful in science thinking. So when they get to Danielle and when they get the time, they'll be awesome and amazing science students. For ELA and Social Studies Committee, we want to make reading and writing fun again. So that was the whole purpose of us just talking for the first time. We want to start with having students write quotes, and then they come and put it in a main office. And then, each morning, we had one of the quotes that a student wrote, and then they read it over announcements, just to bring back that love for writing, that love for reading, just to get excited. Wind Wisdom ELA pilot, which is for third and fourth grade. This has been one of the most intentional rollouts I've ever seen. The support that teachers are receiving and the coaching from Julie Kopp and from Jen Gala. And also, they're going to start visiting other teachers' classrooms as well and getting release time so they can sit and really play together. So we continue to be intentional with that. So just a little bit of academic update. All right. Halloween was on a Monday. I wouldn't recommend. Zero sars, it started with the Halloween. But we had a good time at Friends. Shirley and I were dominos along with the mental health team and the clerical staff. We had our parade, which was awesome to see families come and really watch the third graders parade around our parking lot. Unfortunately, it's not like Council Rock's Chevron parking, but it worked. The fourth grade team did many activities around pumpkins. So parents were in the building, which was nice. They did estimating and measuring and other activities all around pumpkins. So if you walked down a fourth grade hallway, you smelled pumpkins for the rest of the day. Katie Fallon was able to organize a trip to Makers Fair, which was at the Convention Center. Four classrooms of fourth grades was a little tall. It's a connection to our Makers Space. We're able to gather ideas about what our Makers Space looks like. And this is an example of what is happening right now in the Makers Space. Students were using the green screen and using the story maker to, they're doing a science, they're doing a science assignment. We're talking about natural disasters. So they actually have, it's like a newspaper, but then in the middle is the video. And I have some students recording the video. We're in the process of, PTSA is helping us to collect materials that families may have, Ozbots and Legos and everything. And then, we're going to go to Dr. Rio and say, "Hey, let's, let's order." I think that was today. So go order some things. And our tech teachers are also very instrumental with that as well. So I'm excited for the Makers Space. Thank you to TCMS, Into the Woods, came over one morning doing choir to perform for us. So thank you. This was a delayed Hispanic Heritage Month for our fourth graders. I don't know if you ever had Carmine's cooking. It's right here down on Monroe Avenue. But one of the owners came to talk about the experience of opening the building and where the foods came from. I had no idea where foods came from. I thought, like, rice came from a certain place. Definitely wrong, so it was definitely nice to see the different foods that they cook with and where they come from across the world. Sensei Matt and one of his other instructors did karate instructional time, I guess. It was funny to watch kids who don't have control of their body trying to do some of the moves, but it was fun. So that was just a way to bring the community as well. It gives students exposure to karate. And thank you, Dan, for some of these pictures. And all around the building, since it was Thanksgiving, you see writing about gratitude and giving thanks and fall. So these are just some pictures of students writing outside the classroom about being thankful. So that's the turkey in disguise gratitude. Same thing over here with another grade level as well. Our school-based equity team met, and our meeting focused on just coming with community agreements. And these were agreements as a team that we came up with and as parents, teachers, staff. Active listening, agree to disagree. Commitment to follow up or letting it go. So we're going to follow up or something, or you just have to let it go. Listening to understand and not to respond, stay engaged, expect to express discomfort, speak your truth, and expect non-closure. And where's my upcoming, my slide is missing, but I have my upcoming dates. But upcoming dates, we know report cards are going out. We have a half-days. And I don't know what else on the top. Next week, we have orchestra on Wednesday, orchestra and blue band, red band. And then, the following Monday is red band and choir. Looking at all of the top of my head. I don't know where that slide went. What was there? Any questions?
Danielle?
I just had a teacher texting me, and I said, "Stop texting me. I have, I'm on deck here, but Lashara's going a little long. I'm getting a little nervous." So then, Lashara, she told me that you were icing the shooter, is what you were doing.
I am the shooter, so.
I am, let me put this in. Should I put it in presentation here? So it's been a busy month.
Started with the Halloween celebrations that we had. Totally agree with Lashara. I'm taking a class right now on policies, and I would like to make a policy that Halloween should never, ever, ever be on any weekday other than Friday, perhaps. My least favorite day of the school year is the day after Halloween, picking up all the wrappers. And then, as a teacher, listening to all the wrappers all day long. So, but Halloween itself was actually great in school. So many of our students dressed up and just had a great, great, safe and fun time together. And so many of our teachers did as well. I love the fact that they were collaborating with each other to give, to dress up as themes. You know, we've got our Progressive and Mayhem commercial and State Farm over there and Starbucks. And our sixth grade, or our science department is awesome. They went throughout the building. They actually caused more havoc on Halloween than any of the kids did. They traveled throughout the building like that at different points throughout the day and got everybody all excited. But it was a great, great day to see a lot of smiles. As you know, we're celebrating Native American History Month in November, and I've talked about this before, but we launched our Culture and Climate Committee this year. And each of our clubs and the students that are in them have agreed to take on a different month and handle all the kind of theme activities that go around that. So this month, this is just a small example. Our Writing Club took on Native American History Month, and they created a really nice slideshow that has been running throughout our atrium and our cafeteria and on our morning show, just giving information specific to Rochester and Rochester's Native American history. So it was a great project for them to work on. I know the students learned a lot. And as we start to kind of dabble our toes in having more student voice in the activities that we're doing in school, this was one of our first attempts at it. So very nice. And we're proud to have our Shinshaneem fellows back again. We have Emma and Shelly over at both BHS and TCMS, and they have been in quite a few classes already. Most recently, they were talking about water conservation. And we had our sixth graders, some of our sixth graders, who created these water conservation traps, watering devices that they were able to put into effect at home. So they've been great with connecting with the students, and we're really excited for all the things that they have planned for the school year ahead. I'm really proud of some of the efforts that our teachers have been engaging in around securing grants to do some innovative things in our building. This month, or December, I should say, is, I just lost it, is it Universal Human Rights Month, right? Is December, is Universal Human Rights Month. So the lens that the Library Club is taking on that is they're offering a book club, a school-wide book club, with two degrees which centers on climate change. And it's by Alan Gretz, who is an author that so many of our middle schoolers love for the different works that he's written. So they put together a BEF grant and got 75 copies of the book. And I have to tell you that Mrs. Lambert came down to sixth grade lunch the other day. She was going to come to each of the lunches to launch the book club and to give out books. And my sixth graders wiped out a cart of books. It was awesome. Like, I thought she's going to get up and announce this in lunch, and they're going to say, "Yeah, okay, whatever." But those kids ran up and they, they took that, that cart to pieces, which was awesome. But then, you know, now we're kind of scrambling for seventh and eighth graders. But many of the teachers are also reading it, so we're excited. That's one of the pieces that we'll be looking at in December. And then, the library also got a grant from the Monroe One Library System, and they got 15 texts in seven different languages other than English, and then 12 playaways of core curricular novels. So the whole idea there is just continuing to make everything that we're doing in our building accessible to all of our students. So that's really exciting. And the playaways are, you know, a leveling field for everybody, but having those texts in languages other than English has been amazing so far. And then, the last one is also out of our Culture and Climate Committee. They put in a BEF grant for three 75-inch TVs. And those are going to be hung up in our atrium, in our lower atrium, in the cafeteria. And the idea behind them is to make all of our goings-on very accessible and clear and timely. Like we talked about, one of the things we talked about today in our meeting is the RTS bus, loading in the app on one of the TVs so that as bus routes change or there's delays or anything like that, it's up there. It's accessible, it's live time, it's always there. But then, having weekly calendars of, you know, these are the clubs that are meeting, this is where they're meeting, these are the efforts, and then doing some... And then doing some celebrations of students and things that are going on in the building. So um that's really the best area because everybody goes through that area every single day. And um we're really excited to have a live time with information. We have started our food drive, our canned food drive. And apparently I heard today there's something about me with a pie in the face potentially if we meet our goal. Seven hundred and eighty is our goal, seven hundred and eighty items. And it uh that's just about one per student. But um we'll work on that. The students also are working towards having a World Cup day that they're hoping for, especially in light of the USA win today. Um, so they they wanna have a day where they can kind of dress in their favorite soccer teams gear and maybe be able to watch a little bits of soccer in their classrooms. So they're working towards that right now. Like Fres, November was a month of thanks for all of us. So we saw this we appreciate sign throughout the building where homerooms and win classes were able to articulate briefly what they are thankful for. And then also one of our win Wednesdays, our SEL Wednesday was focused specifically on every student writing some sort of note of gratitude to somebody in the building. And so it was really cool. Uh, I had kids tell me that they liked it because it made them feel better because they were recognizing, you know, the efforts of other people. So really just trying to build that culture of of respect and gratitude. So thankful this year that we were able to bring back our E N L Thanksgiving. We had over one hundred families at our Thanksgiving and um students and families, I should say, just to be clear. But we also had, trying to probably about, wow, maybe ten to twelve teachers there as well. And uh it was a hit. I tried some things that I. I was a big girl, I'll just say that. Um, it was hard. But I I did explore and they were, everything was delicious. But the smiles, you could see the smiles on the families' faces. And um having them sit together with each other, having kind of like, Matt, like you said, just with kindergartners, they they had a chance to meet their children's friends um and their family. So it was really nice and lots of cute little tiny little ones. So it was a great success. And then Mrs. Pomeroy teaches in our twelve-one fourth class. And the day before Thanksgiving break, she also had a Thanksgiving lunch. And all of the students participated in creating all aspects of the meal. From the potatoes and the yams and the 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 turkey and all of that. They helped with the decorating of the room. Uh, and they were able to proudly show off their classroom and also their friends to their families. So that was really a special time for all of those students and families. Hopefully that's something that will be able to continue going forward as well. Also, as Lashara said, Into the Woods Junior happened most recently, um, and it was amazing. I don't know if you all had an opportunity to see it, but I brought my son who is in seventh grade. And when we walked out, I said, that's pretty cool that they're like sixth, seventh and eighth graders, right? And he goes, are you kidding me? He said, they were amazing. I thought they were all high schoolers. So um it was really great. A lot of effort went into that. And I I just want to um give kudos to the director of it. Uh Sarah Stavel did a great job taking a play that really had minimal roles in it and adding additional roles to try to increase the number of participants in the play. So um I know she added like twenty-five different roles that weren't originally to be cast in the play. So looking at, you know, really trying to make sure that we're maximizing participation. That idea of maximizing participation is our big goal. I've talked to you about it before, like that I've challenged every student to be involved in something. Um, and so part of our Culture and Climate Committee also is looking at, we've got data on who's involved in what, who's involved in clubs and who's involved in sports. And then um the adults are looking at who's not involved. And then sending out those recruits, like I'm in, you know, I'm in this group, why don't you come and join us? To really try and get everyone attached to something. And then our focus on the student and family engagement um portion of the strategic plan or the blueprint is looking at opportunities to help parents understand the multiple platforms. So School G, School Tool, uh OneNote, OneDrive, ParentSquare, LineWise, all of these things that seem crazy. Uh, we had um a meeting with the principal, PTSA meeting with the principal a few weeks ago. And uh Mrs. Kugel, who is our instructional technology leader, and I were able to present on these things. And we were able to archive it and share it with the PTSA so others can see it. Had some parents ask wonderful questions that kind of prompted us to think more about what we're doing in the building. And then Stacy Kugel was also at Open House, um po- poised there for any any people to ask questions and work through things with her. And then um Erin Bertner is amazing, like look at these uh brochure, not brochures, but um signs that she makes to advertise everything. So uh she's been doing a great job, but we continue to use leverage of the PTSA to advertise all the events that are going on in the building. Um, we've, you know, like our activity nights. But one of the things I wanted to focus on is in working with our PTSA and, you know, just talking through the building and the student experience. One of the things that has come up is how overwhelming lunch can be for some students. It's overstimulating, it's loud, there's anxiety around it. And so we took that feedback immediately and we have created a quiet lunch space for each of the three lunch periods where students um can go and they can take a friend with them so that they're not sitting there by themselves, but just to kind of have a mellower experience um and not feel that pressure of like three hundred kids who are all speaking loudly to each other. So that's just one example of how we're we're working in partnership with them. Um, and then the last thing we're really looking, taking a hard, hard look at this year is our trips. Uh, the Washington DC trip, the World Language trips and um how to make them accessible, to truly make them accessible to everybody. We're taking small, small steps this year, but we still have a lot of work to do. Thankful to the PTSA for the hardship vouchers um that they're able to support us with. World Strides is the company we use for Washington DC. And they just bounced back twelve hundred dollars to us to put towards student trips, uh which is really cool. And then we've got some students doing fundraising uh for the World Language trips. Um, so, so much more to come on that. And then, you know, December's a short month for us, but it is definitely uh concert season. So we've got next week, or this week, we've got uh seventh and eighth grade orchestra and show choir as well as sixth grade. We've got activity night and then we've got band concerts next week. So super exciting stuff. I know I went really long time. Did I make you nervous? Any questions?
Questions from the board? Just a a note of thanks also for your recognition or the recognition of the security team um at your school. They're so important in every school and it's nice to see that kind of recognition.
We're very lucky to have them.
Tom Hall.
All right, evening, everybody. Um, I enjoy the the new format that Dr. Rio put together, so. Couple highlights, just some things to throw at you with regard to some updates and just some highlights to the high school life. So this is during flex in the cafeteria, usually where I start my day. Go over, there's a group of kids on a screen looking and they're watching one of the World Cup. And it uh soccer games, it was actually Poland versus Mexico. And um I think five of the kids in this group, including myself, I'm a kid at heart, are Polish. So we're all like rooting for the Polish team as we were going on. So that was pretty exciting, but lots of activity going on with the games this week. Um, similar to the other buildings, our our music students in the in the choir. So our coral students all wrote each student's name who was in the the coral program. Their names are written and taped up and then kids all wrote comments about them, thanking them and why they are thankful for them in their group and what they do to participate and add to the group. Something, you know, always new when it comes to flex in the high school group out in front of the auditorium. Our our uh students put together an impromptu kind of a talent show just before the Thanksgiving break. Um, they organized it themselves. Kids were sitting out watching, cheering each other on. One was playing, one student was playing the accordion, another one kind of giving a a reading, a dramatic reading. It was just exciting and fun. We heard all this cheering going on, wondered what the heck was happening. And they just decided to have a show in the middle of the hallway. And it was very well done and it was actually gave us some ideas for some future things to do. Friends of Rachel, very active in clothing toiletry collection for Open Door Mission. It's part of what they did for Purple Week this this year. Teen Institute um is a new, well, it's relatively new compared to many of our clubs, uh student leadership group. And this uh particular group of students was, who are in Teen Institute, go to Speculator New York up in the Adirondacks and spend a weekend with other students from across the state, um learning how to be better leaders. And one of the big parts of the retreat is to come up with a plan to bring back to your building, share it with your administrators and hopefully make it happen. When our BHS club won a hundred bucks for this, uh they had the best plan, best uh approach going forward. And it's gonna be some sort of Festive Ideas type program with multiple offerings, either provide taught by students or faculty, uh maybe some parents depending who we get. Um, will be on Spring Fest Day instead of some of the other things we might do in the morning. Kids uh attending sessions that they sign up for all over the building. So I'm really excited about this and they are really gung ho to make it happen, so it'll be something new. Some counseling registrar information. Uh, I shared this news as soon as I found out um about it with uh Dr. McGowan and Dr. Rio. But with our applications that were processed for the early admissions, that's not on here. But we had last year, four hundred and fourteen students applied early. Uh, this year we had nine hundred and nineteen apply in the same time period. Like it was amazing, almost over double the amount of students applying. Um, we've had several instant decision days, forty-five students participated in that. We're instantly into Brockport, NAS, Roberts Wesley and MCC. Um, we took students to Geneseo for a college tour, senior seminar is wrapped up with all the different things. And we have forty students out at EMCC in the trades and the career field. Um, and we took twenty-five sophomores um to, not EMCC, we will if they're interested, but took them on a career exploration trip that's offered here in Rochester every year. And uh twenty-five of our students signed up to go. So looking at the career in construction trades. And in regards to our counseling departmental health, counseling groups are back up and running prior, just like they were prior to COVID. And I just, you know, plucked out the ninth grade group. We have fifty-seven students out of three thirty who actually asked to participate in the counseling group. And, you know, put the stats there, it's it's great for them. We have two counselors with about eight to ten, eleven students. Um, and they'll be starting up December first. And it's just a phenomenal um opportunity that our counselors give to our students. And not every school does this because it is pretty time consuming. It's a lot to organize. Um, but they've been doing it for a while and it's just incredible. And overall, we'll have about two hundred and twenty-five students involved in groups nine, twelve. Natural Helpers is still active and running. And if you're not familiar with what Natural Helpers are, um, these students were selected by their peers through a survey as people who are kind of natural helpers and naturally helping people through problems. They go on a retreat down in Canadega for um two nights and three days. Uh, they are trained in the art of listening and just in helping people work through basic problems that teenagers might go through. And they're also trained when it becomes something that's much more problematic or or severe um that who, when they need to go get professional help or reach out to adults to get that professional help. Um, there there were posters all around when I went down to visit them Saturday morning. Always enjoy bringing them donuts and they act like they haven't been in civilized society for years. And it's just been a couple nights down there and like, but it's amazing. And they become very close to one another and it's a great opportunity. Teachers are trained uh that are chosen by students as well. And uh Mike Bonadonna leads that program, does a really nice job. Dwali Day with our South Asian Student Association, they they put together Dwali Day for all of our students, Festival of Lights. Um, similar Danielle, um I'm much more open to just jump in and eat any food that comes near me. And they celebrate with a lot of uh Dwali Days, a lot of sugary treats and and desserts. And just dug right in and just phenomenal, uh Dr. Kandhar Alpa is our advisor for that. A book club is our favorite time of day. So this is um from one of our brand new teachers, Sarah Sharon Metz. I'm in our um fifteen-one program and Lindsay German's one of our speech language teachers. They are collaborating on doing book clubs with their students. It's amazing to watch them uh learn and read, um discuss the books and all of these skills that they're working on. Excited to jump in. Here's a picture that took as they were reading and talking and discussing throughout the reading. Um, sometimes the teacher reads, sometimes the students are reading. Um, but phenomenal class and they're doing a great job with our coffee cart too, expanding it, um better than Starbucks now. Develop opportunities to help our parents. So when you're thinking about student family experience, uh Jeff Green and I actually put this together, uh together, um. Together, I guess we put this together together. Um, and just he has really been helpful with us this year in doing so much work uh at our school and so many of these things we do together. The multiple platforms though, it's still being rolled out, but you know, as parents, you've got all sorts of apps and things you're learning. We're trying to roll it into just the basic things that a parent needs to know, what they're for and how to access them. That's that's a work in progress, but that was something parents have asked for for a long time. Um, we're continuing to review our student survey that we took, uh our students took and our faculty took last year. School-based equity team, our Culture Climate Leadership Team. PTSA, I meet with them, with Jeff, planning our monthly meetings to give, you know, what parents are looking for and information that's helpful. So we planned the first two meetings of the year here, as you see, on safety and what we do in terms of building safety and district safety. And our ACT SAT meeting, which is always well attended. Also advocating and showing, sharing data with parents on our um low socioeconomic uh numbers and how many free and reduced lunch students we have now as compared to twenty-five years ago. And we really need to um talk up our hardship grants and the opportunities PTSA provides for our students to access all the programs at Brighton regardless of their income. So that's something we're doing more of. Transfer students, we have several things lined up that we've been doing with transfer students every year. That takes a little bit of a different twist and turn. These are the things we've been doing. Our counselors, the ninth and twelfth grade family nights, um giving information to families about those grade levels and what to expect. And our Break Believes Day Committee has already met. We're almost planned for our March Break Believes Day, bringing it back um into the the mold prior to COVID, uh when we had some phenomenal programs in each grade level. So that's underway. We have four concerts before the December break. The first one was last night and then we have three more coming up in December. Uh, sports have started. Um, it's amazing and they already had some scrimmages and real games will be starting up next week. Then we have our Class of Twenty Twenty Two reunion, uh three o'clock on the twenty-second. You're all welcome to come to the cafeteria if you want, if you wanna hang out with some graduates. Any questions?
Questions for Tom Hall?
Thank you.
Thank you. I will um quickly throw it to Dr. McGowan. I think it was referenced in one or two of the presentations that we've sort of standardized in a format for the principal reports. I'm always struck by all the content in the principal reports, yet it seems to caption only a little bit of the hundreds of thousands of things that are going on in all our schools every day. And I thought it might be helpful, uh Dr. McGowan, if you just talk briefly about that format we're gonna work with.
Yeah, it was a great way to work together, to put it all together, you know, to be together, Dr. Hall. The presentations have always been here together, together, together. The presentations have really always been excellent and great updates from each of the buildings. So as we think all the time about how to tie back to the work of the blueprint and have that be the common thread that runs through what we do, that format allows us really to on a regular basis, instead of just the blueprint updates, which are pretty common through the year, um see very clearly how that connects to work in the building on a monthly basis too. And uh have that kind of consistency, which I think just illustrates the great work that's being done, the depth of the work. So it's the day-to-day, but it also shows you the more strategic perspective that the principals have. So great reports. They're fantastic.
Also lends the importance of understanding the blueprint, what we're doing and in in sort of our guiding light, if you will. Thank you. Next stop is approval of a resolution we have previously reviewed related to the commencement of litigation. Motion to approve that resolution.
Still moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor? Next up on the consent agenda that we have received in advance, there is the personnel agenda, fundraising activities and a field trip approval. As is our practice, we will read the gifts out loud. We continue to benefit from a great partnership with the Brighton Education Fund. First, a gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of three thousand twenty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. First, a gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $3,025.98 to the Climate and Culture Committee for the purchase of three 70-inch display screens to be placed in the atrium at BHS. A gift from the Brighton Education Fund, the amount of $975 to TCMS Library, Katie Lambert, to purchase 75 copies of Alan Greath's new book, Two Degrees, for a special discussion day in December and for subsequent use in classrooms. And C, a gift from the Brighton Education Fund in the amount of $100 to Sharon Pomeroy's 12-1-4 class at TCMS to plan, prepare and hold a holiday Thanksgiving meal for their parents. All three of these are particularly salient as we heard about them in the various principal discussions.
Can I ask a question? Are the screens for TCMS?
Not BHS.
Okay.
I said that incorrectly, I apologize. Screens are for TCMS.
It's written as BHS.
I will let.
That was in the letter.
Taking those TVs right out of your.
I will let. Danielle and Tom can arm wrestle over this. Anyways, motion to approve the consent agenda with two principals working together, together, to figure out where the screen should go.
So moved. We'd be together, together.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Eleanor, all those in favor? Anything else for the good of the order? See, nothing. A motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Moved by Susan?